The wires here, hold on. The Wednesday, June 15th, 2022 special meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 5:15 PM. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor? And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Pro Tem Mayor? Commissioner Hill?
I move to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Mayor for military service.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion on this item, Commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I have one announcement this evening. Our Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee was canceled. It was supposed to be held next week because they have a lack of quorum. They're actively seeking new members. They've had three folks who have been term limited, so they currently only have one member on that committee. That will have to continue to be canceled until those seats are filled. So if anyone is interested or knows someone who may be interested in traffic and parking within the city Marquette, we have a lot of residential concerns that come our way that we refer to this board for a thorough review by the city police and by interested and capable citizens. So folks interested and willing, you can apply on our City Marquette website. We have one presentation this evening. This is the main subject of conversation for our special meeting, and then we'll get into some specific new business later on. First up, we've got a city-owned property inventory presentation. I will take it over to our city manager, Karen Kovacs, and she will discuss with staff, and they'll answer our questions after a good presentation here. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So yes, this topic to discuss city-owned property had come, you know, in many conversations with the commission over the past year, but then just recently really has been suggested and suggested to be brought before the commission to really evaluate and review that because there is some idea that the city owns quite a bit of property. But really, what are we doing with that property and what is our potential for some of that property? And as you saw later on, even in the agenda, there are a few offers that had been, or some interest that has been expressed in a few pieces of city-owned property, and we felt that this really kind of tied together by having this discussion on what we do own and what has been deemed as inactive, and Dennis will get to that in a moment here. And then also, what do we do with these offers that we are really obligated to bring before the commission for discussion as well. So Dennis is going to go forward with a presentation on really the inventory book that you have all seen and have before you, and explain the process and how we got to this point, and the involvement with the Planning Commission and staff, and then also what is available and what we do have identified as city-owned property. And just as a refresher as well, there had been a time, you know, within the past, I want to say five to even 10 years, that, you know, consideration for selling off some of the city-owned property had come before the commission, and really, a significant portion of what the city did own and was able to be developed had been already evaluated and either sold or deemed as active or inactive for city uses. So without further ado, I will turn this over to Dennis to kind of go forward with that and then open up some discussion on some of the properties. So Dennis, please.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission and members of the public. Going to go through, I'll try and keep it quick. We're going to go through a little background on current status of city property. And one of the main tool that we use for that is called the City Marquette Property Inventory. This is a book that we have that has identified every single parcel that is owned by the City of Marquette or a subsidiary member of the City of Marquette, such as the Marquette Board of Light and Power. This book is actually not new. We've had this, we've been maintaining a property inventory since I want to, I believe, somewhere around 2016, 2017 was the last time it was updated. But prior to that, it was the late 90s where we started. But it is, it's developed and maintained by the City Planning Commission, but they do have a lot of assistance from the city department heads when this is developed because you have Public Works and Engineering and Parks and Recreation and all those folks that know what the property is used for. Some of them have obvious uses, right? Mattson Park's a park, but then you might have a little sliver of land that looks like a vacant city lot in a certain area, and it turns out that that is needed as like a wetland mitigation parcel for a street project or something like that, and they become tied up. The most recent version of this was actually adopted in May of this year, May 17th of this year by the City Planning Commission. Inside of this book, it uses kind of a map code system. So at the end, there's this real pretty map with all these colors. And then we use the code system to look at the seven different types of property that we have. And those seven different types are broken out into active municipal property. Now, that's property that's being, it's owned by the city and it's being used in some form of government function, whether it's a government building, playground, fire station. It could have an easement on it. It could have utilities. It could be a drainage area. We found some that are clear vision triangles that are required per some of our MDOT projects and so on. Inactive municipal property is the property that we would often consider what we call surplus. It's property that owned by the city, but it's not currently being used for any operation of government. We have BLP property, Board of Light and Power. That's in the city limits, owned by the BLP, and it's also controlled by the BLP. So even though the City of Marquette is the legal entity, the Board of Light and Power is part of the city, the Board of Light and Power does own and control that property on their own. We have Hartwood property located within the townships. This is property that was remaining from the Hartwood purchase that may be outside of the municipal boundaries of the city. We have broken out Housing Commission property because then that is solely under the control of the Housing Commission. We have city parks broken out. City parks are treated a little differently in that via the city charter, once it's designated as, formally designated as a park, there's a pretty big lengthy process that needs to happen via the community to have it undesignedated as a park. And then property in other jurisdictions would be property that's owned by the city but may be located somewhere far off. And I think we found in the property manual that we own property underneath the Dead River Basin, which is kind of interesting. Moving forward, when we use the manual, excuse me, the manual itself has a map that has numbers on it, and they correspond to an actual physical table. So if you wanted to look at parcel A32, you would go into the manual and find A32. It would tell you the property identification number, the number of acres, what it's zoned, the address, and how it's currently being used. The way that the city uses this manual is, there's a couple of different ways that it can be done, obviously for this exercise tonight. The most important use is done by the Planning Commission. And as I mentioned earlier, they maintain and use it quite a bit, and more specifically during the Community Master Plan. The Planning Commission will use it to look at identifying future land uses when they make the future land use map. So they'll look at a particular parcel on here, and they would identify any existing land activity patterns. They'd look at the current zoning of the surrounding area, possible projection of growth, consideration for transportation, and then that helps them, if it's a surplus parcel, designate it for, on the future land use map for whatever use that would be. Economic development. We previously used this municipal property book to identify parcels during a previous strategic plan where we sent out development, RFPs, for Hartwood property, Founder's Landing, and Cliff Style. And we also use this to respond to requests to purchase city property. Quite often, we get requests to purchase city property that doesn't make it to the city commission or the public because we can look in this manual and say, we're sorry, it's actively being used for government, and we're not going to bring it forth to the city commission for something that couldn't be done. Our finance department uses this to assist with the asset inventory that they maintain. I can't speak a whole heck of a lot to that, but it basically is an important part of their operation for what they do. And on the public side of things, we use it to see for a variety of different uses. And one of the things that I thought was interesting to put in here is the level of city-owned or non-taxable land is currently 49% of the total land. Now, that's not all city-owned property. That would be everything with a tax exemption, such as state, county, city, BLP, and PIL. But it's an important thing to take a look at. And I'm actually, even though this number seems high, really kind of proud of it because when I first started here, it was 57%. So we've made some progress over the years. So now I'm going to bring us to the current city commission request that came from the city commission through the city manager was to identify any current property owned by the city which may be considered appropriate for sale and development. And these would be properties of a possible appropriate scale, appropriate surrounding land uses, and the typical things that we would look at in a planning exercise. And we were able to identify four of those properties, 2201 Wright Street, 300 Newberry Street, 601 South Lake Shore, which is the remainder of Founder's Landing, and 600 West Spring Street. And I will go through each one of these parcels rather quickly to talk about any of the, just the basic background data on each one of those. 2201 Wright Street is approximately 12 acres. It is outlined in blue on this property mat. It is directly kitty-corner to the Board of Light and Power. Now, the future land use map has this, identified this conservation and recreation. It's zoned municipal because it's owned by the City of Marquette. And a utility analysis for the property, it would require utility extensions. However, they are present in front of the Board and Light and Power property. One consideration is that it is basically located in the backyards of the township subdivision that you can see there. It is a higher traffic area. However, there's no real likely capacity issues when we bounce it against the city transportation plan. In 1994, there was a housing project that was proposed here. I do not have any details of the housing project, other than there were minutes in the city commission meeting where it was denied for not being appropriate at that time. And in 2021, this was a property that was presented to Renovare for possible development, along with the Spring Street parcel and the McClellan parcel that we've already gone through, that exercise. And there were limitations, at least in their mind, due to the location. And a lot of that had to do with, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but a lot of it had to do with the programs they were looking for needed to be closer to downtown, walkable, and things like that. And that parcel wouldn't have scored very high for any of the affordable housing criteria for the programs.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. And that was specifically mentioned when we did offer this property to Renovare, but the walkability component was a critical part of their project.
Thank you. The next one is 300 Newberry Street. Basically, if you turn south and throw a softball, as far as you can throw it across the bypass, you'll hit this property. It's up on top of the hill across the 41 bypass. It's approximately five acres. Again, the future land use map has it as conservation and recreation. And some of the history on that was, that parcel does have a history. And part of what the Planning Commission looked at is that history as well, which I'll get to in a second. But it's zoned municipal. It is a former planted subdivision, which never was completed because of the utility extensions and the access and the terrain are very limited on that property. If you can see through the 10-foot contours, you have two rockout crops on the southern end of it, and it was just a challenge for anyone to work with that. And there's also, on the north side of it, there's a stream buffer easement for MDOT that I don't have mapped on here, but just, it's important to remember that it's not the entire parcel or anything like that, but a portion of it is encumbered by that easement. We also had, if I can remember correctly, we had two local developers at one point in time looking to purchase that to do some work, and I think one of them was Mr. Curran. And their investigation led to not being interested because of those constraints. 601 Lake Shore Boulevard, this is approximately two and a half acres. On the future land use map, it is identified as mixed use. It's currently zoned municipal because of the city ownership. It is the remaining Founder's Landing parcel, and it's this little, I don't know if you, folks in the crowd can see it, but it's basically this triangle area here, I guess. Note to self, on the map making, that one's a little busy. But it's directly across from the, I believe that's the Fairfield Inn, that was recently constructed there. It's the former Superior Stop property. It is served by utilities, and it is a higher traffic area, but there's no likely capacity issues there. That does function rather well. But the important thing to note is, being the former Superior Stop property, it's going to require some further environmental analysis and possibly some mitigation. Historically, back when they were DEQ, Steve Harrington did some work on that site via grant from EPA, and I think there was also a deed restriction on it as well. So there are some issues that would need to be, sorry, dealt with there. And then we have 600 Spring Street. Now, 600 Spring Street is kind of like a new add for us. This was formerly held in abeyance by a previous city commission for development of a consolidated fire station. However, it no longer meets that need. It's, I have down here one acre. It's really around nine or so. It's plus or minus. It's not surveyed, but the future land use map has it identified as civic because it was held in abeyance for the fire station, and it's also adjoining Duke Life Point, which is considered that classification. It is, however, zoned multifamily residential, which in that, when the Planning Commission recently went through some zoning exercises, a good portion of that area was rezoned to multifamily to try and accommodate more duplexes and more types of, or more ability closer to the downtown to be able to put in some housing. And it is a higher traffic area with 7th Street. However, we don't, the modeling doesn't show any higher capacity issues on that. So those are really the four parcels that I came up with. I will open it up for questions. We do also have the property map and whatnot in here if we need to look at it, but that concludes my presentation at this time, and I'm available for questions.
I just wanted to let the commission know that the property, the inventory book had been shared, and it is made available. It is also printed here as well. It is meant to, as Dennis had said, to be more of an interactive document. However, there is still some use for it in print, as you see before you, but we will also be able to share that presentation with you as well after the meeting.
I'm just trying to, I'm just thinking. I'm going to ask before we get to Commissioner comments and questions, if maybe our city manager, Karen, if you could share just a little precursor on the master planning process and how this will fold into that as well.
Absolutely. So as we, you know, had been kind of alluding to throughout the past few months, we are moving forward with updating our Community Master Plan and actually looking to go out for a contractor or consultant to come and help us with that. So the RFP is actually being drafted as we speak, and that timeline will be shared here within the next week, potentially, on when we will open that up, and then when we will be looking to proceed forward with community engagement and the process with the city commission. So Dennis, I know that you have had conversations as well with the Planning Commission, so I don't know if you have any other insight on how we are tying some of these.
Yeah, actually, I can speak to that a little bit. If you're looking for like time windows, we are hoping to get the request for proposal mailed out July, the first week in July, and we'd have a turnaround on that for August, be able to vet some of the proposals, go through interviews. Of course, during that timeframe, we have some background work of developing the steering committee and so on and so forth. But we'd be looking at having a consultant onboard by September and then get into working on that Community Master Plan by the time the snow flies.
That's helpful. Thank you both. I appreciate that update. So I guess I just.
Can I just one clarifying?
Sure.
How long would the process last? What are you anticipating?
We've provided, I believe we've provided eight months for that process, which is fairly typical.
And obviously, once we were able to have the consultant named, they may have, you know, either more insight or other ideas on engagement and refining that process as well. So, but typically, like as Dennis had mentioned, eight months is what we were expecting and planning on. Could be, could be more, could be less.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just, I think it's important to, one thing we've heard a lot of is trying to find a way to look at our, what we do have for city-owned property, or maybe some of our strategies for sale or encouraging of development, but maybe like taking a broader lens and looking at some of the goals we want to accomplish. So I know the master plan will also help us get there. This is a really good attempt, and I'm grateful to both of you for, you know, trying to, as we have these further down the agenda, right? We've got these three specific requests, try to have that broader lens as we go into it. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage that way. I'm, you know, certainly willing to have whatever discussion or questions Commissioners may have, but just know that there's more to come, and staff is doing the best they can to have that 10,000-foot view and look at our priorities as we make decisions further on the agenda and into the future. I, for one, am really glad that we're trying to take a step back and have more of a holistic and maybe some kind of a standard approach to these things. I know I usually try to reserve my comments for the end, but I felt like we needed a little bit of framework there. So I will start off with Commissioner Stonehouse on any discussion or questions, and then we'll go down the line here.
Your Honor, I don't, I don't really have any questions at this point.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions. First, just some clarification on the Community Master Plan. When, so to be clear, when do we expect the new Community Master Plan to be completed and adopted, and we can, you know, that should, that will now start guiding City Plan?
About this time next year would be my target date.
Okay, thanks. So sometime summer?
By the 4th of July.
Okay.
I learned a long time ago in this community, you better get it done before the 4th. I'm even pushing, I'm even pushing it in June.
Yeah, good point. Good point. So I have a couple of questions about the 601 South Lake Shore Boulevard property. So it's currently zoned municipal, I believe. Some surrounding properties are zoned general commercial, mixed use. But I'm curious if you can speak to what, speak a little bit more to what the, some of the past planning documents here at the city have said about the future use of this property.
So 601 Lake Shore Boulevard, we did go back today and look at the 2000, we looked at a couple of documents. We looked at the 1999 Lake Shore Boulevard, or the Lake Shore Task Force, it was called, right? The 1999 Lake Shore Task Force Committee. And for this area, it spoke to supporting the redevelopment of it, with the middle of the site being residential, and actually, the southern end of the site being more commercial type of activity to blend in with the existing stuff that was going on there, the existing land use. Fast forward to 2004, in the Community Master Plan, we actually had a little section of that Community Master Plan that was called the Lower Harbor Plan, and that was the Beckett-Rader Plan. Plan where they actually broke it down a little bit more for us. And that plan had a, basically a concept plan that had called for residential in this area, and then the areas that are currently developed as residential on up to the Hampton Hotel. And there was an illustrative drawing that they had put in there by a landscape architect where actually showed it as single-family homes kind of in this, this little area. I'll do it for the benefit of the commission in this way. There was basically a road coming in here, and then there were homes in that area, residential, residential homes. That was, again, being the illustrative plan, that was an example of what could occur there. The general consensus of the community was something of a residential land use in nature in 2004.
Okay. Do any of our current, what do our current, you know, future land use map or our current community master plan say about that?
Mixed use. The future land use map shows it as mixed use, and that was based upon the idea that as communities kind of develop over time, as Founder's Landing kind of built out, mixed use would allow more opportunities. Again, I'm trying to interpret the planning commission here, so I got to be careful so I'm not embellishing, but, you know, the general consensus of the planning commission at that time was that the mixed-use parcel provides the most opportunity for redevelopment that would complement what's down there already.
Okay, thank you. So the, I had a couple of questions about properties, inactive properties that were included in the list that city staff and the planning commission put together, which were not included in this presentation. And the first one is at 2145 Sugarloaf Avenue, it's about five acres. The actual lot number is B02. It looked, according to the description that was provided, it says that it's vacant except for a large portion that is covered by a sawdust pile. So I'm just curious.
Absolutely, I can comment on that one. And I'm working on getting the map up here in a second, and we can take a look at it. That is on the backside of the sports complex. And I believe the sawdust pile has been.
Dennis, that's across the street from Tourist Park by the Jacob Eddy. It's not, it's not behind the sports complex, it's the one right by the Jacob, the Jacob Eddy, Northerners property.
That was my understanding as well, that it's on the east side of Sugarloaf, between Tourist Park and Jacob Eddy.
Right, the Sugarloaf.
Correct. Yep, that's this parcel right here.
You're probably looking right at it, Dennis.
We're going to switch over to the, we're going to switch over to the map that's included in the inventory book.
Do I got to switch over? Oh, are we good now? There, how's that? Much better?
Yes.
I believe you're referring to this parcel right here. And that, there's a drainage portion up here. And I really can't speak to the rest of it at this point in time without embellishing something, but I know we've got some drainage situation up here, and that was, would, the one that's next to the Jacob Eddy Center. Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just curious why that wasn't included, but I suppose that makes it a little bit more sense. The other property that I was curious about, so there's, these are actually listed as active properties in the document that was provided to us. On South 7th Street, there are several of them, A83, A84, as well as A120 and A121, described as being future right-of-ways for a portion, but city parcel for the rest. These are small properties, but in a residential area, I was just curious why they're considered active and why they weren't included.
Yep, these properties here are considered active because we actually had to acquire those by a requirement of the Federal Highway Transportation Department and MDOT as the project for the roundabout. And they're required clear vision triangles. Now, if Jen LaPage was here, she'd probably like start shaking, because she was the one that had to acquire all those properties, and it was a lot of fun for anybody that remembers that. It was, it was actually really tough when you're dealing with people that, you know, you're buying a house from them that you eventually have to end up taking. And those were all acquired for that use, they're required for clear vision areas and other easements as part of that project.
All right, thanks, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, and I think that it's, it would be interesting to look further into a couple of the other properties that you included in your presentation. I won't ask any more questions right now, but I will just say that I am really glad that we're having this meeting tonight. On some of these properties, I think we, it would be beneficial for us to have future, you know, continued discussion in a public forum like this by the city commission about some of these other properties. But I'm sure we'll have more discussion later when we're talking about some of the offers to purchase and some of the different recommendations or potential motions that were provided by city staff. But certainly, I think that we need to designate surplus city property wherever appropriate for future affordable and workforce housing development. And I think that while the community master planning process will be very helpful, I don't know that we can afford to wait an entire year for that process to be complete before we do anything. So I hope that we can have another meeting like this in the near future with the goal of establishing a list of properties that we can direct city staff to put out requests for proposals for, specifically for affordable and workforce housing development. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, with your presentation, I'm really struck by how much property we do not own anymore in the city, and we often get a lot of questions about what property we can put affordable housing on, but there really is a very limited amount at this point. The other thing that I really was surprised at, I thought it was November 15th that we had to get things done before, not July 4th. Just in following up to Commissioner Bonzel's questions about just looking for little pieces of property that may be available for additional housing, I have two questions, and maybe they're just too small. The one is at 1300 Grant Avenue, it's almost a half of an acre, and it says it was to be used for park and/or recreation purposes. Is that anything that could be?
Yeah, I'll bring that up on the map. That property is actually deed restricted. This is it right here, and there's two things with it. One, half of it is a rockout crop. When you drive by on McClellan and you see that face of that rock, that's the property, and half of it is kind of used as a driveway to get into the other one, but that's really a moot point because it was donated to the city, and it is deed restricted that for park and recreation in perpetuity, so that when they donated, they put a deed restriction on it.
Well, okay, and the other one, I think I know which one it is, is a 100 East Nicolay. It's a smaller piece of property, and it says vacant, platted lot? Is that?
100.
On East Nicolay, 100 East Nicolay.
B21?
I think it's just a big ditch, but.
Yeah, this one right here. Let me zoom in on that one. I believe that one was required for the transportation project as well, as one of those areas that you can't build in.
Okay. Yeah, okay, and those are my only questions. I do feel that this is a really good exercise for us to take a look, a broader look on what's available, and what we want to do, what's the value of owning property that we really don't intend to do anything with, and what's the value of selling it, but I will move on.
Commissioner Hanley?
I don't really have much. I think this was a great way to set us up for going into the new business things, and I think I'll withhold all my stuff until then.
Commissioner Hill?
Could you zoom in to downtown from, like, take it in one more? Please, sorry it's so loud. So the, the flat lot, the flat parking lot between Barraga and Springer Main, between the Ordoch Brewery, whatever that is, yeah, that thing. Who owns, what status is that property?
That's the City of Marquette owned.
But what's its status, like?
It is actively being used as a parking lot. I believe that's under DDA control.
Because it seems to me that it's important to consider properties that are, you know, as we were discussing earlier, walkable and near mini-services. It seems like a prime location to add housing, and I'm wondering how, what would be the procedure process to bring these opportunities into the conversation?
So for this exercise, our intent was really to just focus on those inactive parcels, so when, if we would like to go forward with reevaluating the uses that we currently have, I would really strongly try to, I would strongly encourage us going back to the planning commission to have some conversation with them, also if it's appropriate to be working this into some of that, you know, community master planning process and really reevaluating some of these areas and what they're being used for.
I would agree that that would be part of a bigger community discussion. Again, and keep in mind, when we put this inventory together, if it's actively being used, that's what it is. We don't project into the future of what we think it should be as to what you're speaking to. That would more appropriately be done by the planning commission and part of a community discussion to say, okay, well, you know, we have this parking lot in the downtown, do we want to repurpose it? And then you need to include the DDA in that discussion and the rest of the community. I think that becomes its own exercise, is what I'm trying to say.
And that goes, that goes for with any other, you know, things like parks as well, that would be much broader conversation, and a much, a bigger conversation, I'm sorry, and more of a planning perspective would be required for that, too.
And I guess, yeah, that's, so that's really helpful to clarify, the purpose of this conversation versus the conversation about what comes into the future in terms of, you know, I think sometimes it's like, well, we're, to Commissioner Bonzel's point about where we want to put housing, or where we want to put, what we want to put up for requests for proposals to consider putting housing there, starting with the inactive properties, and then having another, having a conversation that would move it into properties that we might want to change the use of. Is that, is that what you're saying? Did I get that right?
Yes, a great, nice aside.
So I, because I, I've also, and Mayor Smith said this too at the beginning, if it's holistic approach and coming in one step at a time has been frankly a little frustrating, but it does help to understand the different classifications and why we have to start with the inactive. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I think, I do want to say about the 601 South Lake Shore, I personally witnessed DEQ taking samples there where the coal gasification plant had been. So I think that that property is going to have a lot of work to be done to make it, I don't know, at the very tip of the triangle, there's a lot of contamination under that soil, so I have a lot of questions about that one. And then the 2201 Wright Street, isn't that basically vertical? Like, I mean, isn't that, like, that hillside's pretty much?
It is, it is vertical, but we've, we've witnessed developers be able to do things, but that's, you know, that's part of the cost that goes along with it, I guess. This is probably not a good map to look at. My, I think my presentation, if I can bring that up, had a, had a better, oops, no, we don't want to do that. Slideshow, come on. How's that? Here we go.
Yeah, I just see a lot of yellow there, which it's, yeah, so, I mean, there's, I guess, yeah, there we go, thank you, that's perfect. Yeah, and some, it kind of seems like, well, I understand, starting with inactive, this exercise also makes me think, well, there's a reason none of these have been developed yet, to just kind of cut to the chase. Yeah, you're nodding. Okay, so we're, we are in agreement that there's significant challenges with these properties, but we have looked at them and considered each one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I feel like the reason we address this now versus waiting a year was twofold. One, we have a dire need for affordable housing in the community, so it's something we're talking about all the time, so it's good to actually look at, you know, what options we have as a city. But then, two, we received three somewhat time-sensitive requests, two, you know, for folks to purchase city property, and instead of just addressing those one by one, which is what we had been doing in the past, we were trying to take that, that different, like, step-back approach and look at it like, like we've mentioned, holistically. I do feel like we've had a fundamental shift in the City of Marquette for what of our, some of our needs are, so I am curious with that master planning process, how that will turn out, especially as it relates to things like affordable housing, childcare, broadband. Some of it are the same things we've been talking about, right, jobs, economic development. Those aren't necessarily new things, and even affordable housing isn't new, it's been in the master plan for years, but I think the focus is a little more specific right now with everything going on. So I think that we'll have more to come on that. Related to your question, Commissioner Hill, about that parking lot on Spring Street, I think that's a great example of how we use our wonderful planning commissioners and the public to help us envision what that future is. So I think it would be helpful to keep examples like that in mind and continually bring them up, maybe when the proposal is before the commission for who our master planner is, when we talk about what questions we're going to ask the public. I know, you know, personally, I want to ask folks about childcare, not that I get to choose that, but I just want to make sure that we're keeping those things that we've been thinking about in the front of mind and that we, we know that we're trying to think a little bit more broadly and a little bit into the future, so I appreciate that perspective. I don't think I had anything else. I appreciate the sitting tour of our surplus property here in the City of Marquette. There's not a lot here, I mean, there's a lot here, but there's not a lot available that can be dug into tomorrow, but what we do have, I think that we could try to get a little bit creative with. And then obviously, I think through that master planning process, we may have more to come as it relates to private property and maybe what options or menu of incentives we may have for developers moving forward for affordable housing. That's more to come on that. Anything else from the commission or from staff? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Bonzel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I forgot to mention while I was speaking, I also, I think that, I guess I just want to reiterate, I hope we can have another meeting kind of like this one in the near future to continue these discussions that we started tonight. And I also think it's important that whatever direction we do end up giving to city staff, that at some point in the near future, we establish some sort of policy or explicit statement as a commission of what kind of support the city can provide to facilitate affordable and workforce housing development. For, it seems unlikely, given our current budget situation, that we'd ever, we would use general fund dollars for that, but we did just include $2 million in bonding for infrastructure for a housing development in South Marquette that's not really affordable. that's not really affordable. So, if we were willing to do that for a market rate development, why not set some kind of number for what we'd be willing to contribute to a more, more affordable development? Especially given that that's often, that local buy-in is often a requirement for any state or federal funding to be activated. Thanks.
Any other discussion from the Commission? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the opportunity to sit back and listen to everybody's comments and kind of watch how the flow is going. I think one thing is very clear is that any development in Marquette will be boutique. In other words, it's going to be a small development. It's not going to be the big operations that we might see other places because we simply don't have the room. But what that begs is the necessity of the next organization, the county becoming very involved in this process. Because the county does have the room and does have the space once you leave the limits of the City of Marquette and the constraints that we have to operate in. So, I think it's extraordinarily important that we have this conversation with the county and we look for the county to take a significant leadership role in the area of affordable housing. And that includes the financing of it, not expecting the cities to have to pick that up. And I'm also speaking of the other communities around when I say that. But for the county, again, to act as that agent for change and that change in a positive way, it should not be sitting on the shoulders of the citizens of Marquette. We are not the only issue here. We have got to get the county involved and the other municipalities. I would point out an old adage from my army days, which I hope people take the right way. It has said, "The most dangerous man in the world is a second lieutenant with a map." And to some point, I hope that we as a commission don't become the most dangerous people in the world, most dangerous commissioners, because we have a map. And it's easy to look at that map and say, "Do this and do that and do this and do that." And we have to realize that maybe we look at a larger view of that map instead of trying to pull things out. And we just don't make decisions from a piece of paper that we see on the wall. We make decisions by listening to staff, as we always, I think largely have, by personal site visits, by looking at property, by understanding, as we like to use the term, holistic, the holistic approach to what we can do. But certainly a great exercise. I commend staff for putting it together. I think this has been, I think, very illuminating, not only for the Commission, but certainly for our residents. And that's, that's a critical part of it all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion from the Commission or from staff on this presentation? Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you. All right. We are now moving on to our first public comment session of the evening. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address and you can approach the center podium when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Kerry Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street here in Marquette. I am president of the NoCayman on Trail Network. However, I'm speaking today only on my behalf as the board has not formally met to discuss the purchase of the Hartwood property requested by Mark Kern that you're going to address later. We, in fact, only found out about this yesterday. And with that said, I will be bringing it to our NTN board. Our board meeting started five minutes ago, so I'm going to run out of here as soon as I finish my comments so I can chair that. With that said, the NTN has had a mutually beneficial relationship with Mark Kern and his developments previously. And I have no doubt that if this development were to proceed, we would have a really good relationship going forward. However, as this has just come up and very few details are provided, I am somewhat concerned about the Commission voting in favor of pursuing this without more discussion and information being given first. I realize that the offer of $100,000 will not stand without review. As I know from NTN's experience of land purchase from the city, the land must be appraised first and the sale price is dependent on that appraisal. I'd be amazed if that land appraised at $100,000. If an appraisal is not needed, I would like to offer the city $101,000. Personally, I will buy it with a promise that I will put the entire 200 acres into the Gottlieb Gamber, my wife, dog park and preserve and conservancy. Throw it out there now. You can consider that one tonight, too. I also think it would behoove the city to see development plans prior to the sale to ensure that the purchase aligns with the Hartwood plan on record. We, the citizens of Marquette, were, if my memory serves, told this portion of the Hartwood was not to be sold, but would rather be maintained in its natural state. While I do not want to inhibit progress or commerce for the city or the county, noting that, knowing that some of this land is in Sands Township, I do think that if there was a change in philosophy on the Hartwood, the citizens and NoCayman on Trail Network, as representative of the non-motorized community, should have a seat at the table and would like to be involved in discussions before the land is sold. I have to run to my meeting. I'm late.
Anyone else for public comment?
John Taylor, 2050 Prescott Avenue, number 26, Marquette. Having seen the available maps and the not actively used land, I would like to encourage the city commission to work toward building affordable or income-based housing at the land at 600 West Spring Street. Being as near to existing developments like the hospital or Snowberry Heights, it would require less infrastructure upgrade in terms of water mains. The area is already built for larger developments. It is very near to multiple employers, still about a mile from campus. Wouldn't obstruct anyone's view greatly that I'm aware of and otherwise is zoned perfectly for solving this problem. There are very few land use, unused plots that we have. This, I believe, is the single most suitable one for approaching affordable housing to begin with. It won't be the end of the plan because realistically, to patch the problem, we'd need about 60 units of general affordable housing and another 20 to 40 for senior citizens that's barrier-free. That won't happen all at once or at one location. But you could easily make a good start on the acreage available there. And I would encourage the city to do so moving forward. It's just not ideal spot for a condo either. I mean, I know Veridia seems to think they could build five condos and a restroom, but it's not fit for that purpose. And I believe this would be key to keeping young talent in Marquette in the interest of continuing to build our community and build affordable housing. And I'm continuing to believe that we cannot afford to be inactive in this process. And I would like to address Commissioner Stonehouse's remarks specifically. That what I hear when you speak is that it needs to not be the city's objective at all to create affordable housing here of, why can it be not be elsewhere in the world reaches of the county? Why must affordable housing exist in Marquette? Simply put, Commissioner, because the people that built this city need to be able to live in this city. The people that are continuing to build this city deserve to be able to live in this city. And if the Commission has ideas to the contrary, I will be honored to be the second lieutenant with a map for as long as it takes. That said, please do take into consideration the plat at 600 West Spring. And I look forward to working with you all on this issue in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Mary Dowling. I live at 175 Bayou Street and I'm here to represent Beacon House. I wrote this really eloquent, heart pounding speech until I heard all of you speak. And then I realized that probably the most important thing I can say to you is if affordable housing is important to you, in the few months we've been open, we have provided not just affordable but free housing to over 815, 15 people with over 3,000 nights. What we do is very, very important economically. The impact of those people that we stay comes right back and does impact the City of Marquette. We think we probably will make an annual economic impact of about $1 million a year with the way our people shop and our staff and all of that. But another thing about that property that was just brought up to me right before I left the office was because of the helicopter pad, that there's probably a limitation of how high anything can go there. It's a relatively small footprint. It's about .84 acres, I believe. And I think if I understand correctly, you know, to make a big impact on other kinds of affordable housing, you would need to go probably up pretty high in order to get at any kind of capacity. So, back to what Beacon House wants to do and that is to continue to do what we do and that is provide those wonderful, fabulous, compassionate types of services that include lodging, housing for people who, some of our guests stay for six months. Sometime, we had one stay with us for almost a year. So, it's, it's a big, big deal to every single person that spends even just one night with us to not have to worry about what it's going to cost. They just know that we're there to take care of them. Of course, we encourage donations. That's how we keep going. But, but affordable housing is Beacon House. That's what we do. That's who we are. And we think we would just make a very, very wonderful use of that land and make you all very, very proud. Not just how it looks, but with what we do. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration for that.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Barry Poleson, 101 North Lake Shore. I am here representing Marquette Opportunity LLC, who is looking at the Founders Landing Parcel. So, I'm here to answer questions that come up while you're discussing that, if you have any. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Jana Fox, 625 Liberator Street in Gwin. I'm here on behalf of Habitat. I want to thank everyone for having this conversation. It's really encouraging to hear all this dynamic talk about affordable housing and what the city can do. I would just like to put out there that Habitat, as an affordable home builder, we could maybe potentially be that boutique developer who could come in and take a half acre here or there and the other where to create affordable housing. Our homeownership program is actually working hand in hand with selected partner families where they put in the sweat equity into the project. And then they actually purchase the home at an affordable mortgage, whether that means through the volunteer labor or through donated products. Or Habitat giving a pretty substantial subsidy, which with the high costs of construction has been, you know, getting larger every time. So, I would like to just kind of put it out there that we are interested and, you know, are very, we'll keep a keen eye on what develops over the next year with this consultant and what comes of that. I also think that it would be awesome to work together with multiple government agencies, as you said, about the county level. At one point in the past year, so I, we had heard that there was an intergovernmental housing coalition. And Habitat was very interested in that and we reached out and was kind of told, oh, not at this point, there's, we'll invite you at that point when we're ready to broaden the, the scope of that. And that was unfortunate because we felt like we'd really thought a whole coalition of all sorts of developers, both private and public, coming together to talk about these things. I'm not sure where that lies anymore. I know that that was spearheaded by the LSCP. And so, if that's something that has been continuing, I would encourage, like, allowing someone like Habitat or other developers to take a seat there and, and start that conversation, especially on a countywide, talking with the City of Nagani and Ishoming and all the surrounding townships. That would be really incredible to have that conversation so that, you know, what's happening in Nagani can complement what happens in Marquette and vice versa and that we can have this as a countywide conversation. So, hopefully, we can have that invitation at some point here. But thank you for all your hard work and I look forward to potentially working with all you in the future.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioner and the City Manager for moving public comment in this meeting till after the presentation, which enabled members of the audience to be aware of the information that the Commission had before they spoke. Because I found it enormously useful to listen and learn the maps and the process and the timing and the pros and the cons. And I think the best comment I heard tonight was from Commissioner Hill when she kind of gently said, "Isn't that straight up vertical?" Which I thought was one of the things I didn't necessarily get from the map, but it was very useful and I commend you and I would recommend when we have these special Commission meetings that the public comment come after the presentation, because I didn't feel cut off at all. I just knew more. Secondly, in terms of solving the affordable housing crisis, I believe that Commissioner Stonehouse's comment is the, the pathway. He's not a lieutenant with a map. He's a colonel with a map and they do different things with maps. But if you look at Marquette County, it is literally the largest county in the state. And it has many different municipalities and it has many different options in terms of putting people in affordable housing. And the only part missing from this is the walkability. And that is a twofold approach where the county has more options available to it for grants, transportation grants to move people from one side of the county to the next. And I would encourage the city to make use of the, I believe you have a liaison with the Marquette County Commission on Affordable Housing. I think it's your Assistant City Manager. Sean, am I correct? Are you the liaison to the Marquette County Commission Task Force on Housing? Okay, I would encourage that that work be accelerated because I believe that that is the path forward that is going to provide the most housing for the most people. The, the challenge is for walkability in town. Walkability in downtown is fine. There just isn't a grocery store except for Whole Foods where it's prohibitively expensive for most people to shop. So, walkability to me means being able to get to a store and that means more public transportation. I'd also encourage this booklet to be made available on the city website. And as the updates occur, that, let people know, because I will be looking for it and spending some time with it in terms of, of resolving this. I also point out that next week, we're talking about budget matters and that you will find in their criteria for what the city is supposed to provide, affordable housing is not listed as a part of what the city provides. Stay tuned. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Orville Dushno, 1802 Kimber, Marquette. A resident since 1965 and a property taxpayer since 1966. I thank Dennis for that presentation. I was going to come up and say a few things, but then I said, "I don't know much about what I'm talking about." So, that presentation was great. Surplus property, city property. It's just a matter of a short time before we're going to be talking services. We're going to be talking maybe an increase in taxes. So, this surplus property, hopefully, it's going to go on the tax rolls. And that's going to help us in the future. Mary and her crew, they do a terrific job. I think we've got a situation here now that we're, we're going to be scrambling for more money in the future. And I think it's a good time to look at the surplus property and include it on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Next, we've got our consent agenda for the evening. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
And we have a second. Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We are now on to new business. We have three items. Note square here. Okay, item three is the resolution of intent to sell property 600 West Spring Street. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Yes, thank you. The City Manager received a proposal from the Steve Mariucci Beacon House to acquire surplus city property located directly adjacent to the new Beacon House at 600 West Spring Street. The Beacon House has independently obtained an appraisal for the .84 acre parcel adjacent to their new facility and has made an offer for the full appraised value of the property, $128,000. At this time, representatives of the Beacon House have not stated an exact intended use for the parcel, but have identified it as a key element of future for the parcel, but have identified it as a key element of future planning for their facility. This property was previously held in abeyance for a development of a consolidated fire hall by action of a previous city commission. Recently, the fire chief has advised that this property no longer meets their size requirements, and he has began actively seeking alternate property. This property was also suggested to Renovare Development after their offer to purchase the McCullen property was denied. However, it did not meet the size needs to support their large financial portfolio they were pursuing. The future land use map in the community master plan has identified the property as civic due to the previous action to hold for a fire station. As such, it is currently zoned municipal, however, from a planning perspective, it is a good location for a high-density workforce housing opportunity if the economics of the development were satisfiable for a property developer. Fiscal effect, none by this action. The city would receive revenue if a sale is negotiated and approved. Recommendation, adopt the resolution of intent to sell and authorize the City Manager to negotiate terms for the potential sale of the property. Alternatives, A, deny the purchase request from the Steve Mariucci Beacon House, B, deny the purchase request from the Steve Mariucci Beacon House and direct city staff to prepare a request for proposal for development of this property.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to deny the purchase request from the Steve Mariucci Beacon House and direct city staff to prepare requests for proposals for development of the property.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Davis?
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, discussion?
Well, the only discussion I think I would make, Your Honor, is that we're going to have a very difficult meeting next week dealing with, with property taxes and the desperate need to increase the taxable status of the city. And it would be, I think, sending a very bad message if we did not use every potential to increase the tax base of the city, including this property. In other words, by putting this property out for proposals, and if we can gather a developer who will do a project that is capable of raising tax money, I think we need to follow that. And I'm not in any way stating that the mission of Beacon House is not a good, viable, and one that we need to have in the community. I think this is a case of the highest and best value for the taxpayers of the city of Marquette.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Yes. I certainly agree with Commissioner Stonehouse's saying. I also want to let everyone know that I just love the Beacon House, and they really have done so many wonderful things and have come so far over the many years that they've been in existence. And they do provide affordable housing, they provide free housing, and, and they do contribute to the community, but that is not housing for our local residents, and it doesn't help us with the affordable housing issue. And the fact that we had offered it to Renovare earlier, you know, kind of speaks to the fact that this is a, a piece of land that's very desirable to put some additional housing on, that could be on our tax roll and could help us to address the housing problem.
That's it. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one quick clarifying question first. Is this, it states that this property is zoned municipal, which I think is correct, but I thought it was stated earlier perhaps that it was recently rezoned multifamily residential, or was being considered?
We, we just looked it up on the map on the LDC, and I must have made an error on that. It is zoned municipal.
Okay. But it is located directly, like, next to multifamily residential, correct?
Yeah, the entire area to the east and south of it is multifamily residential.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I would echo Commissioner Davis's comments about how important the Beacon House is to our community. Truly, I mean, we've heard a couple of times now, I think, some of the statistics about how many people, mostly Ubers, but also people from outside the UP who are helped by that organization. I think that Commissioner Stonehouse is correct, that we need to think about what's the highest and best use of that property, and how can we best meet the community's needs with this property. You know, given that city staff state, have stated that this property could potentially make sense for higher-density workforce housing, given that it was included as an inactive, or, well, it probably would have otherwise been included as an inactive property if we had known a little earlier that the fire department couldn't use this for a new fire hall, it probably would have been on that list as well, that was put together by the Planning Commission. I, I would like to make a motion to, to, well, I would like to amend, to move to amend Commissioner Stonehouse's motion in the following way, that at the end, after the statement development of the property, that we would add, quote, "as higher-density, low-income, or workforce housing as defined in the community master plan and the ad hoc housing committee final report."
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. I'm, I'm going to put our city clerk to the test here. Would you mind to repeat the motion Commissioner Stonehouse made and the amendment from Commissioner Bonzel?
I'm actually going to have Commissioner Bonzel repeat that.
Okay.
Sure. I will read the entire motion as it would exist if my amendment passed. Quote, "Deny the purchase request from Steve Mariucci Beacon House and direct city staff to prepare a request for proposals for development of the property as higher-density, low-income, or workforce housing as defined in the community master plan and the ad hoc housing committee final report."
Got it. Thank you. Do we have a second on the amendment? Commissioner Hanley?
I will second the amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Bonzel, anything to add on your amendment?
Nothing, other than that, this is, this kind of action, it was exactly what was recommended by the ad hoc housing committee, and this is the sort of outcome, you know, getting an actual direction for city staff to go out and try and get some workforce housing or affordable housing development on a specific city-owned property. That's exactly the outcome that I was hoping from this meeting and future meetings like it. And I think this is an opportunity, especially given that, you know, we are, we have just recently been having a lot of discussions about workforce housing, and given the language included in the background info on tonight's agenda, I think it makes a lot of sense to be a little bit more specific about what we want in that request for proposals.
Commissioner Hanley?
I want to second everything that Commissioner Bonzel just said, and also put it that we just had a wonderful meeting, a couple of meetings ago, where we had many members of our community in here talking to us about affordable housing. We all looked them in the eye and said we wanted to work with them on this, and I think this is a great way of taking that first step towards trying to do just that.
Any other Commissioners for discussion on the amendment? Or if they haven't had any discussion on the original motion? Commissioner Hill?
Last one standing. Thank you. I think this is a really productive conversation, and again, I want to echo the support for the Beacon House and its purpose, and the work, the good work that it does in its current location. And this, however, I think the question in front of us is not about the Beacon House, but it is very much about land use and, and identifying how a, a city-owned parcel will be used in the future. And I want to commend the city staff for the write-up and making it so clear in what it could be a somewhat, there's a lot of steps in that, but I think it's a really well-written statement of the background and the alternatives. And, and then to that end, I think specifying this, this to me is a really good location for housing. It's, it's near many services, it's walkable to many things, it is exactly the kind of opportunity that I think we should pursue, and I appreciate Commissioner Bonzel making the more specific amendment.
Did we have any other Commissioners who haven't spoken yet? Commissioner Davis, you have already, or you?
No.
You all have, except for me.
Yes.
Okay, before we get into the next round of baby discussion here, I just, I'm going to give city staff a heads up that I'm probably going to need some help managing the motion and the amendment, and in case there are any additional things that happen there, because it's hard to track that and track thoughts at the same time, so I'm just going to say that out loud. I'm torn on this. I, I really appreciate everything the Beacon House does, and I, I hope that you're able to continue. We are facing a really difficult budget crisis right now, and needs from the community. So I, I feel like we've got to have that bigger lens right now, but it's a hard, a hard thing, and I hope you can understand that. So I just wanted to say that to Mary Dowling, who's in the audience, and to the Beacon House, and hope that you're able to continue to serve the folks well. And I had hoped that maybe an amendment would include something that would allow the Beacon House to put in, you know, as, as an option. So that's why I'm struggling a little bit, but I certainly understand the reasoning for the amendment, and I could get behind it, I'm still kind of weighing in my head. So I guess I'm, I'm curious to hear what other Commissioners think about leaving it more wide open, so that maybe if there aren't any developers that put in for, as Commissioner Bonzel's, you know, narrowed the options, that, that maybe someone else could. I, I'm just thinking out loud, right, because it's new information coming my way. All right, other Commissioners? I have had a chance to talk, although not very eloquently. I think Commissioner Davis had her hand first, and then we'll go to Commissioner Stonehouse.
Very much, I would like to see this turned into a, a housing development that would be for workforce housing or more affordable than what we have been, than what has been happening in the city. I'm a little concerned about restricting it and wondering if we could change it to, I would, I would, before this motion, if it was a preference for, for developers who could put in workforce housing, but I'm a little concerned that we won't have any offers at all if people like Renovare have already looked at it and considered it not doable. So I, I think as the motion reads, it's just restrictive. I would be happier with it if it was, there was a preference for those kind of housing development.
So I'm going to use my, my limited power and ask a question before Commissioner Stonehouse. I'm sorry. Staff, if, if we put it as Commissioner Bonzel has recommended and nothing happens, then what? Does it just stay that way, or does it come back to the Commission to revisit for a future plan? Because that's my fear, is we do that, it sits out there, and nothing happens, and then, well.
So I believe that if we, if we sit with, or if we go out for an RFP with no, no offers or no proposals that are brought forward, then my understanding is it just, it does just sit there at that point, there's no action on that. But coming back before any other offers, I would have to come back before the Commission. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, so I guess if there were no offers and a substantial amount of time had passed where we thought, okay, we weren't able to get an offer, would you, as a City Manager, bring it back to the Commission with a new recommendation potentially, or?
Potentially, yes. I would probably ask for more direction on if we continue to proceed, or if we, you know, either expand, but really, that would probably tie back into our community master planning process as well, and reevaluating what that, the direction and the use of that land would be.
Thank you. That helps, just kind of know what this is.
That would be my default, but I would have to really dig back and back down into that a little bit more.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, the way I made, the reason I've made the motion the way I made it was to keep it as open-ended as we could, so we could gather in as many opportunities for reply and from which we could sort and find the one that best fit us. By putting the restrictions so tightly on that resolution, I think you've really shot yourself in the foot, because now you've limited, if any, that will come in under those restrictions, as opposed to having an open-ended funnel that would allow you to sort out the best, those that best met your criteria. In other words, what you really want to have there coming out the skinny end of the funnel. So we gather a lot, we sort them out, and then we find the ones that best fit our criteria, which may well be affordable housing. I would be surprised, frankly, if it's not, because the way that property would lend itself to so being. But again, there was a reason that I left that, that resolution open, and by putting this amendment in, you destroy that opportunity to make it widely acceptable and widely reviewable. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Hanley?
I have to disagree. I think that by putting this amendment in, we limit it, we, and yes, we will limit the scope of the people, but we're limiting it to the people that we're actually looking for. If it comes to, and I mean, I'm assuming we could probably put an end date on the RFP, and if after 60 days, or eight, 90 days, or whatever it is we think is an appropriate time, we haven't received any, which I would be pretty shocked if we didn't, then we can then come again and say, okay, it didn't work out for that, let's see what else we could go with. But I think that limiting it to this is the way to show that this is what we're serious about, and this is what we're trying to move forward with. And I think it's a great way to do it. I don't think it's going to hurt us to, especially since we've been sitting on this property for years, as it was tagged for something else. It is not something that we have to sell immediately, but I think this way we get the best chance to get an actual affordable housing, because the groups that are looking for RFPs that are saying, looking for affordable housing, looking for these kind of developments, they're looking for those type of RFPs, not just a blanket RFP, because competing against a commercial, and with, I believe, with our city plan, or the way we do it, we have to go with the best bids and best offers, so it would be harder to say no to a commercial property at that point, would it not? In the way it goes? Is, can we say no, we want it for this, if we don't actually limit it, any RFP?
You have discretion.
Yes, we do.
Okay. But I just, I think this is the best way we could get a lot of the same proposals, and if we don't get any, I think then we could move forward with a different route. But I think that this is a safe way to go ahead and try and actually make a step towards affordable housing in our city.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, I guess, point out a couple of things. First of all, I don't think that my amendment would destroy or restrict future opportunities. As the City Manager just stated, if we don't get any responses to this more specific RFP, we can always make a new one. I, I think that if we don't, I think that one thing we have learned in Marquette, and really across the country over the last few years, is that if we aren't specific about what we want, we're not going to get what we want. I think that if we want affordable housing in Marquette, we need to actually say out loud explicitly that that's what we want in a particular location. I would also just point out that my amendment, I actually pretty intentionally mirrored the language that was actually included in the agenda background. For, for instance, at the very end, the last sentence of the agenda background, it states, "This property is currently zoned municipal, however, from a planning perspective, it is a good location for a higher-density workforce housing opportunity if the economic, economics of development were satisfiable for a property developer." And, and so I think that while it's tempting to try and cast a broader net, I think we need to try asking specifically for what we, as the Commission, feel is the real need for this property and the real, highest and best use for this property. I would also just note that although it is zoned municipal, in addition to the background provided by staff, it is also surrounded, as Mr. Stackowitz stated, by multifamily residential, as well as some medium-density residential, and some fairly dense planned unit development that's not residential, but it's a large, multi-story hospital. And so I think that this certainly would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods, surrounding land uses. Although it's a small parcel, if you're creative and you're able to build higher density, like you could in multifamily residential district, for example, you could get a decent number of units in there. I was looking before this meeting at Missing Middle Housing by Dan Perelak, who's a national housing expert who actually advised our ad hoc housing committee, and looking at some of the density per unit data for stacked duplexes and things, and fourplexes and things like that, you could get maybe eight units, maybe a dozen units, or even more on a property that size if you were creative. So I will, I would also just point out that even if it's a Lytec Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Development, that we would still get revenue through a pilt, even if it wouldn't be a regular taxable property. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
City Manager?
That's actually where I was going to request for clarification, if we end up going that route and going out for an RFP. I think city staff would really need some direction on what we're looking for and what our level of commitment would be, because there are certain tax incentives out there, and then also with, as you mentioned, the Lytec properties typically come with a pilt. So I, I would ask for, if, if you are looking for us to go forward with affordable housing options, really to maybe define what you're also willing to commit to as well, which is, is looking towards a pilt, because that would have to be part of the equation as well.
I hear you ask, I just don't know how to proceed with that.
Nope, that's just putting it out there.
That's a little more detailed, right? Commissioners, any thoughts on that? Commissioner Davis?
Well, the affordable housing issue seems to be an immediate concern. And if we were to restrict the options for developers, we would delay it further, no matter how many days we say, if it's 60 days or 90 days, whatever, it could be a year that we re-look at the RFP. By leaving it a little more open with a preference to that, because I think there's, you know, Commissioners, Bonzel, you, the second part of that sentence is, you know, is a, there's a big if, if- a big if, if economics of development were satisfiable for the property developer. So I think that with a preference for workforce housing or whatever, however we want to word that, we are allowing more options and we don't necessarily have to take the highest bid. We could take the bid that gives us the most bang for our buck in terms of housing that we need in Marquette. So I still have a preference for leaving a little bit more open and having that preference be in the RFP.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm wondering if, instead of trying to wordsmith the RFP at this meeting, we would ask staff to develop a little further an RFP that we could then, how could we maybe move into a conversation where we're setting criteria or setting some kind of ability for us to give you that direction without us having to wordsmith right now? Could we maybe, I'm not, again, not seeking delay of this process, but in order to then clarify a process that would allow us to make those kind of stronger recommendations and then being able to move that forward, it might actually make things move forward faster than trying to wordsmith right now.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting hung up. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I feel like, I'm torn, but I'm, I think I would support Commissioner Bonzel's amendment of the motion. But now that city staff is wanting more detail, I'm hung up on what detail to provide because I don't feel like I can give that at this very moment.
Yeah.
To bring, maybe to bring that back to the commission. I don't know what the best.
And they come, and maybe ask for it to come right back at the next meeting.
City Manager? I know you have your hand up, Commissioner Bonzel.
I think it's just more of, I think maybe not, are we talking more of a directive or a preference? Maybe, maybe making that a little bit more clear. And I think that, I suppose with some of the comments or I guess the decision or the vote that does occur might give us that, but more of a, I don't want to say a nod, but more of a, a little bit more direction on the details. Not specific details because obviously that's operational and we are very well-versed in that. But from what I'm hearing, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking it would be the directive, not the preference.
We'll take a vote in a moment to tell. But Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, to clarify, the original, I definitely understand and respect what Commissioner Davis is saying about maybe a preference. I understand that perspective. My intent was and still is with this amendment that it would be a directive. I have a question for city staff, which is that, kind of along the lines of what Commissioner Hill just said, which is that if this amendment were to pass and then the motion as amended were to pass, wouldn't you, you have to bring back the request for proposals for city commission approval before it went out? Or would that be possible for us to do?
From my understanding, it's typically those requests for proposals are put out, but the proposals are what are brought back before the commission.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would support, you know, potentially bringing back the final request for proposals with some more details at perhaps the next meeting. If Commissioner Hill was prepared to make a motion to that effect, I would be willing to withdraw my amendment, provide and support another amendment, provided that it does specifically direct staff to seek low-income or workforce housing development on the property.
I just want to add that I think, I know you want more direction, and I think that that is something that could be provided. I think that you would have enough information to get started, and then I could meet with you to let you know if I think we need more from the commission, and then we could come back. It's another option that would be available as well. Commissioner Hill?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I think the, the out, asking for an outcome for affordable and the language that was used, asking for that outcome but not asking for how they get there is, I think, the intent. Is that correct, Commissioner Bonzel? And versus a preference, which I think is, is, it doesn't, I don't know, I think if we understand, the directive is in terms of what the outcome is, but we're not, we're not saying how they're going to get there. I'm wondering if that, if that is helpful to you in understanding, and what we want is to, of course, maximize the categories of housing that we desperately need in this community, and does that help provide clarification?
So, so actually, I think where, I think what I would be suggesting is in our, if we were to be directed to go back for an RFP or to issue an RFP, what I would probably recommend is including a requirement in that proposal, in the submitted proposals to disclose or state any subsidies or, yeah, local subsidies and state those very clearly upfront so that we are not going forward with one intent and then coming back for another ask for subsidy or financing or of some sort. So.
I think we finally worked through, I think that makes sense, Commissioner Hill. Thank you for that. It kind of pivoted my thought process to, if we leave it kind of, as Commissioner Bonzel has stated, we're essentially asking the developer to state how they'll get there.
Mm-hmm.
We don't prescribe, it has to be this, this, or this, you know, come to us, it's a proposal, we voted up or down, or pick the best from the bunch. So we don't, we don't prescribe what that is. So actually, I'm thinking about it a little bit more clearly in my head now, so thank you.
So we would really request that staff be able to move forward with that. I think we have enough if that were the case without having to bring that draft back before the commission.
Agreed. Any other discussion before we take a vote on the amendment? Sure, Commissioner Davis?
Perhaps I'm hung up on the word directive. Is a directive a requirement or is a directive a preference?
Requirement.
It would be a, a directive would be a requirement.
Requirement. Okay. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendment. And this is not a roll call vote, so we're just going to do a vote here. All, okay, okay. No, I think we've got it. Okay, all in favor of the amendment as made by Commissioner Bonzel? Please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes four to two. City Clerk, could you please read the overall amendment now, or the overall motion with the amendment? Thank you.
Deny the purchase request for the Steve Mariucci Beacon House and direct city staff to prepare a request for proposals for development of the property, higher-density, affordable workhouse, workforce housing if the economics of development were satisfiable for the property developer.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, Commissioners, let's take a vote on the overall, oh, I'm sorry, more discussion?
My apologies. I don't think that was the actual text of the amendment that I offered.
Okay. Can you correct her or correct City Clerk?
Yes, yeah, my apologies, but I believe that the amendment that I made, the motion as amended should read, quote, "Deny the purchase request for Steve Mariucci Beacon House and direct city staff to prepare a request for proposals for development of the property as higher-density, low-income or workforce housing as defined in the community master plan and the ad hoc housing committee final report."
City Clerk, we got that now?
I believe so.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, let's take a motion as stated by Commissioner Bonzel just now. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
This is not a roll call, is it?
This is a roll call.
Is it a roll call? I'm so sorry. I'm trying here. All right, City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
My apologies.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Mayor Smith?
No, you missed me.
Did I miss you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes five to one. All right, thank you all. That was a little tough to get through, and that was mostly procedurally on me, so appreciate your patience. Okay, up next, we have item number four under New Business, Resolution of Intent to Sell City Property, Hartwood Forest Land, roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background on this item?
The city manager received a proposal from Mark Curran representing Curran and Company to acquire 200 acres of surplus city property located in Sands Township. The properties included in the request are referred to as parcels 50, 51, 52, 53, 56, and 57. This property is a component of the Hartwood Forest acquisition and is located just outside the southwest corner of the city. The property contains a significant portion of the Carp River, including the convergence of Morgan Creek and the Carp River known as unnamed Morgan Falls, as well as several portions of the NTN bike trails. The developer has stated they would like to only develop 20 acres of the property with the condition that the city place nearly the entire acreage of the remaining property located in the Marquette Township into perpetual conservation easement. The offer included in the letter was for $100,000. However, an appraisal will need to be performed if the commission chooses to proceed. Past city practices has required the potential purchaser to obtain the appraisal from a state-certified or licensed real estate appraiser at their own cost, and the resolution of intent to sell reflects this. This property is identified as Hartwood property within townships in the city property book. It does not have a listed use in the book, but is currently being extensively used for recreation. Fiscal effect: None by this action. The city would receive revenue if a sale is negotiated and approved. Recommendation: Deny the purchase request from Curran and Company. Alternatives: Adopt the resolution of intent to sell and authorize the city manager to negotiate terms of the potential sale of the property.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we deny the purchase request from Curran and Company.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, discussion?
I think the city came to us with this because it was put before them, but I also think that right now it is doing exactly what that property was meant to do and being recreation. And seeing as it's not going to help the city tax rolls in any way, as it's not in the city, I see no positive upside to selling this purchase, or this property.
And Commissioner Stonehouse, anything to add?
I concur. I believe it is not in the best, the best interests of the city of Marquette or taxpayers to do so. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this parcel or this vote? I have a little bit. So I support the motion. I'll be voting to deny. I did talk with Lori Howsworth earlier today with NTN, and the one question she had is related, there is a portion of the Hartwood Forest either with this section or adjacent to, or maybe both, that is in the townships, that NTN was wondering about how they could get that moved into a conservation easement. And so I just wanted to put that on the radar of staff, that that's something that they'll be, I guess, asking for, and it's a little complicated because some of that property is not in the city of Marquette.
Something that we had discussed once this proposal came before us, and as you said, it's complicated just because of where it is and the relationship and the way that it is kind of surrounded by the township and just the uniqueness of that property. So we will certainly be continuing that conversation, looking into something of that nature and evaluating what our options are for that. So, definitely heard.
I appreciate Carrie Gottlieb coming and speaking tonight, and I think the solid partnership that we have with NTN, and I'm hoping that we can continue conversations with them for any future changes with the Hartwood Forest, but I would hope that this will not be one of them. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this item. City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Last on New Business, item five, Resolution of Intent to Sell City Property, Founder's Landing also requires a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background on this item?
The city manager received a proposal from Marquette Opportunity LLC to acquire a portion of the surplus property located 601 South Lake Shore Boulevard in the area known as Founder's Landing. Marquette Opportunity LLC is the same group that developed the Fairfield Inn and Suites located directly across from the proposed purchase site of, on Lake Shore Boulevard. This parcel is located on the opposite side of Lake Shore Boulevard from Fairfield Inn on the west side of the bike path and is part of the former Superior Stop property, which has covered a significant portion of the area, commonly referred to as Founder's Landing Parcel II. The developer has indicated they are intending on utilizing the property for the construction of an extended stay hotel with a potential investment of $12 million to $14 million. The developer has indicated that they would be interested in pursuing an as-is appraisal that accounts for contamination in the calculation of value, calculation of value to avoid brownfield financing. Therefore, if the, if this sale moves forward, an appraisal that considers the environmental condition of the site absent of complete remediation or brownfield TIF availability will need to be obtained. For comparative purposes, parcel 2B slash C of Founder's Landing Fairfield Inn was purchased for $666,000 in 2019 and received $200,000 in environmental costs from the Founder's Landing brownfield TIF. This property is listed as inactive city property in the city property book, therefore it is considered to be surplus. The future land use map in the community master plan has identified the property as mixed, mixed use to facilitate economic development. The current zoning of the property is municipal. Direction from the city commission is needed to determine how the city manager should proceed. Fiscal effect: None by this action. The city would receive an agreed, agreed-upon amount for the sale of the property and as well as increased tax revenue if a sale is negotiated and approved as presented. Recommendation: Adopt the resolution of intent to sell and authorize the city manager to negotiate terms for the potential sale of the property.
Thank you, City Clerk. Go ahead.
We're getting there. A, deny the purchase request from Marquette Opportunity LLC. B, deny the purchase request from the Marquette Opportunity LLC and direct city staff to prepare a request for proposals for development of the property.
Thank you, City Clerk. Sorry, jumped the gun there. It's on the second page. I got mixed up. All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll go, I'll go into this one, Your Honor. My, my motion will be to adopt the resolution of intent to sell and authorize the city manager to negotiate terms for the potential sale of the property.
Okay, and do we have a second on that motion? Motion dies. Do we have another motion on that item? Or we have to take a vote? I'm sorry. There was no second, so it just dies, right?
No second.
It just dies. I'm just making sure. I haven't had that happen. It's first. Okay, do we have a different motion on this item that the commission would like to make? Any takers? We've got to do something. Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we deny the purchase request from Marquette Opportunity LLC.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
I will second that motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, discussion?
I do not think this is the appropriate thing to do. I worry about having yet another hotel in that area, and I have got, in my time on the commission, the biggest push I have had back is that people don't want any more hotels down by the water. I have heard it over and over again, so I can't in good conscience support that.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with Commissioner Hanley. I've received the same feedback, talked to a lot of people, heard from a lot of people, as I'm sure we all have, that the sort of development being proposed, essentially another hotel on the waterfront, is, well, maybe there's an economic need, need or justification for it from the standpoint of, you know, the lodging industry. I think from the broader standpoint of the community as a whole, that's not the best use of this property. I will say that I'm not seconding or, you know, voting in favor of Commissioner Hanley's motion because I think that we should just do nothing with it. There are, there's a long trail of city planning documents which incorporated a large amount of public input and public feedback and were approved by multiple different planning commissions and city commissions, which identify this property for future mixed-use development, perhaps not high-density but a lower or medium-density level. In fact, In fact, I think that this would be a good location, potentially. You know, people like to say that we'll never get affordable housing on the lakefront, but we control this property. And in the future, potentially, it would make sense to have some low income or workforce or mixed-income housing development on this property. But that's, I think, a topic for another day. We're going to need more community input on that. The lakefront is very important. It's very sensitive. People in the community rightly care very deeply about it, and so do I. And so I think that we should deny the, I think we can hopefully agree, most of us, that this isn't the right use for the property, and I hope that we can continue to have conversations like we had tonight that include this property specifically for future residential use, ideally affordable or workforce housing.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
The only thing I would add to that, very well said, Commissioner Bonzel, is that given the change in use with the power plant coming down, I think there's a conversation to be had about the entire South Marquette waterfront and how all of that might fit together now with that. Well, the, I do support continuing to use the area as a deep-water port. There's still, I think, other options and opportunities now that there's been that big change, and I look forward to that conversation in the master plan process.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Actually, Your Honor, I don't like my own resolution. But I made it for a very specific purpose, and that's so each one of us and the public thoroughly understood that this was not a brownfield project. No brownfield, you know, the problem with the brownfield has always been, yes, we set one up, and it takes 15 years or 20 years before we begin to see any payback on it because the brownfield paying for the restitution of the terrain. However, in this instance, the purchaser of the property was willing to not do a brownfield, but to buy, in effect, pay for his own rehabilitation of the area and build the property, which meant an immediate tax flow to the city of Marquette. An immediate tax flow to the city of Marquette, not waiting 10 years or five years or having to go through a brownfield process. And again, we next week are going to sit down and wrestle with that budget to the point that we will very likely, I think, probably end up putting two mills on the population because we don't have economic development. We don't have it in the city of Marquette. What we have, the tax-paying properties, are not sufficient to support city government. This was an opportunity where all of us could have stood up and said, we're going to have to solve that problem by putting, we may not want to do it, we may not like it, but in this case, was the payoff would have been very significant. So I wanted the public to know that, that what we just gave up, and I'd like these commissioners too, to realize what they just gave up by not going deeper into this problem. Thank you, Your Honor. But I don't like my motion either. I'm sorry.
I think Commissioner Davis hasn't had a chance to talk yet. Commissioner Davis?
I really appreciate that you brought that forward, Commissioner Stonehouse, because that was part, that was what was attractive to me in allowing this, the hotel to go there, that they were going to not do a brownfield, and that's why I struggled over this. I was hoping that we would have had that other alternative, that alternative B, where we would put this out for bids, because I do feel that there's some potential there for housing, and maybe it becomes something that we talk about in the future. I also appreciate what Commissioner Hill said about thinking more about what happens in that area, because I think with the power plant coming down, some of the things are going to look real different. And I have an ongoing concern about that intersection of Genesee and the highway, because there are so many cars that run the red light, and we're putting more businesses in that area. And so that whole traffic, like where the hotel entrance would be and putting more buildings there is a traffic concern for me, and it's a big safety concern for the citizens as I've almost gotten hit a couple times. So I guess I was more in favor of putting it out for bids with perhaps some preferences, as we've already talked about, for housing. So I'm kind of still struggling about how I'm going to vote for this.
And I just want to add before I get to Commissioner Hill, that I too was open to the idea of opening it up to others. I'm okay with this because I think it will circle back eventually and we'll find a use for the property, maybe have a little bit more intentional thought about it. I have that thought, and then the other half of me does not like that it's that close to the lake to be able, you know, to put buildings there. I think I've had a lot of feedback from the public, as Commissioner Bonzel mentioned, putting things that close to the lake is not something that the community wants to see. They want public access and public visibility to the lake. So I struggle with that a little bit, but I think that these are some of the hard questions we have to answer as the commission. So certainly willing to continue those conversations, but I'm not comfortable approving this property as proposed as of now. So I know Commissioner Hill had been waiting to speak, and then I'll get to you, Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you. I'm, I could think of nothing that I have heard more strongly than, don't develop the lakeshore. And so I, I do not, I, and Commissioner Stonehouse has been a strong advocate for listening to the community, and certainly the community is of one voice on this. And I think there are many other places we can do commercial development than on that particular, than right there on the lakeshore, where we had honored that development was happening on the other side of the road. This is now the other side of the bike path at best. Or we're putting in a new road, and as a fellow resident of South Marquette, our access to the lake is actually really not very good. And I was very unhappy that we did not have an opportunity to really have a conversation about the redevelopment of US 41. I really think that was a missed opportunity for us in the South Marquette to develop what are really critical access points. I would not ask, for example, when my parents come to visit, they're in their late 70s, I would not ask them to cross US 41. Now I'm in my car, and I'm having to drive across. So, yeah, obviously sore point for me. So yes, I think we need to come at this carefully and thoughtfully, and that we are certainly considering economic opportunities in other parts of the city that I think are really valuable. But no, the city is absolutely united about having more buildings on the lakefront.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would just point out that I absolutely understand and respect where Commissioner Stonehouse is coming from with his comments. And he's right, we could have gotten an immediate injection of revenue from this development. It's really hard to say how much exactly. The developers mentioned in, that they would be willing to make approximately a $12 to $14 million investment. If you just take those numbers, and this is very simplistic, but if you plug that into the city millage rate as it is right now, even if we were to approve a millage increase, maybe looking at at most, maybe 200 to 250,000 from a $12 to $14 million, a property with a taxable value of 12 to 14 million, probably be less than that. I think that we could probably get a larger investment if we had some kind of mixed-use or residential developer come in. We could have more density, a higher value per acre, and potentially get a significant amount of housing developed, given that it is not a large, but a decent-sized property at about four acres. So I think that taking extra time to make sure that we get this one right could potentially produce more revenue for the city in the long run while also meeting community needs. So that's why I seconded Commissioner Hanley's motion.
Any additional discussion before we take a vote? City Clerk, could we please have the roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. All right, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and address unless you've already done so at this meeting. Can approach the center podium anyone who wishing to speak.
I thank the members of the commission for their time and efforts tonight, from the games of mental Tetris it took to get our motions together. I do thank you for that as well. I have loved the Beacon House as an institution. Former Commissioner Lorenzer got me to care greatly about the place, but I believe the correct decision was made tonight, and I thank you for your action. And I believe you also took the correct action on the plot of land Curran was after, because personally, in my mind, that's fleecing the city. If you're getting rid of that much acreage for 100,000, that's roughly about two grand an acre, and last I checked, property down there is going for about 19,500 an acre undeveloped. So, good call. Now I have to actually suck up my pride. I never thought I'd say this, but Fred, I completely agree with you on the third thing you voted on. I would have built the hotel. I believe, on the contrary, I'm developing the waterfront to its highest taxable and best use value, especially if it's not brownfield. And I believe striking that balance between high-end and working-class developments will be key to the city's future. We are building a spectacular, truly magnificent city here, and I am willing to admit that we need developments of all kinds, and I thank you for keeping that in mind tonight. And so again, I thank you for your efforts and thank you for your cooperation with us. Let's build something amazing. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Mary Dowling, Beacon House, want to say thank you very much for the consideration that you did give this. I do understand where you're coming from, and I think I'm going to take a moment to be emotional as well and just to say how much it made my heart feel good to know that you appreciate and value what Beacon House does. And I know each of you individually does. That makes me feel great. I know whatever happens to that property, we're going to be great neighbors, and if by some slim chance down the road it does come back around that it is available, we would certainly always want to entertain that opportunity. But thank you to each of you individually for your concern and your care and your support to what we do, because that really means an awful lot. So, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I have a suggestion. It's a simple suggestion, but it would have saved about one hour and 40 minutes of discussion tonight. In each one of these property discussions, one party issued one proposal for one piece of land. Would it be possible, prudent, reasonable, and kind of commonsensical if, as a rule, when you get one party issuing one request for property, that triggers a process whereby the city automatically puts that property out in an RFQ? And in that RFQ, there's a box you mark, preference for no brownfield. And then there's another box you mark, preference for affordable housing. You don't make it part of the RFQ, but you make it, will this be affordable housing? Mark it. And then will it be a brownfield or not? Mark that. And then, instead of having these discussions, which were edifying and instructional, but ended up with no, 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 you would have a mechanism in place whereby the city could take in a bid and say, hey, look, there's interest in the property. Let's do an RFQ, and let's put the person who submits to the test. Make them submit in writing, is it going to be a brownfield? And is it going to be possible for it to be affordable housing or to specify a percentage of affordable housing in the RFQ? I think it could change the perception of these bidding processes, whereas as soon as you find out one party's interested in something, you should legitimately find out if other people are interested in it. And then when you've got one guy at the podium saying, hey, look, if you're going to let it go for 100,000, I'll make it 101,000, that's a big clue that you shouldn't sign off on that property. I mean, I was just sitting there going, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it, and thankfully you did not. But I'm just trying to make a proposal from what I heard here tonight. It's not about any one developer, any one interest. It's, these come up, you know, how much is going to be affordable housing? Is it going to be brownfield? And next week, the budget is going to be hammered through again, and I think it's time that that's a reasonable inquiry for every property sale the city does or does not make. In addition, Commissioner Hill, if we had a traffic and parking committee, I would recommend you take it to them and recommend a pedestrian walkway across US 41 sooner rather than later, because that's one of my favorite intersections. And right now, because of the construction to the left, it's sort of like, you know, it's green light, shut your eyes and go, you know, pray you get across. And that's a reasonable thing to do in lieu of, you know, wanting the state to include us in all discussions. So thank you for your discussions tonight, and I respectfully request you take my idea under consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. This brings us to comments from the commission. Start things off with Commissioner Bonzel.
I have no further comments at this time. I just want to thank everybody for a productive meeting, and I'm glad we were able to make some progress on affordable housing tonight, however small it might be.
Commissioner Davis?
I think we had a very good discussion, and I think it indicates how much we struggle with some of these decisions and how we so much want to do the right thing, whether it's affordable housing or our operating millage or selling land. And just, we're just going to keep moving forward, and I appreciate the discussion that we've had tonight.
Commissioner Hanley?
I want to echo that. I think tonight was very productive. We got through a lot of very hard things to get through, and we're going to keep moving forward as we go towards next week and our special meeting.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I do agree, very, very productive meeting. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for making it a complicated issue quite clear. I really appreciate that. I wanted to address Ms. Brum's comments. The city has been certified in something called redevelopment-ready. RRE, what's the, RRC, we're a redevelopment-ready community. And so we are, in fact, on mini-lists, and so the properties are available. And I would encourage you to learn about the RRC process. We were one of, it's a very rigorous process that the state does, and it allows us to be, the cities to be presented in a way as very ready for economic development, and there's a way to access properties through that process. And then also on the overpass idea, there is a reason, context, I worked on pedestrian bicycle advocacy for, well, since 94, since 94, however long ago that was. And you don't see very many overpasses because they're actually not a very good idea. There's a lot of maintenance and upkeep. They cost a lot of money to build. And then particularly in our climate and in that location in particular, that is not the best use of money. It's much better to adopt a lot of, there's a lot of what's called traffic calming and pedestrian things that aren't just the bumps that no one likes, but there's other more innovative things we could be doing to make it safer to cross the street and still have good through traffic. So, and I can point to many, many resources on that. And again, I think that was a missed opportunity, and I really hope we can do more there in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick hits. I think, again, great, great meeting tonight, long, tedious. We got our maps out. We all put silver bar or gold bars on and played some tenet for a little bit, but one thing that came, I think, very obviously to me, and I'm sure for many people, hopefully everybody, is that Marquette does not have a lot of land that can easily be converted to any kind of housing, or any kind of projects for that matter, from the standpoint that we are a landlocked city. We don't have the ability to really expand. So that means that we've got to work with our neighbors, and I mean, work with our neighbors through the county, and we've got to make sure we can get the county to be a real leader in this, because it's not only a problem here, it's a problem other places too. And we can, by leadership together, we can, I think, get a better handle on this project. We should not lose sight of the fact that we have made a massive number of changes to land development code focused at affordable housing, many of them recommended by the ad hoc committee, many recommended by staff. If I were to ask Mr. Stachowicz what they were, I'm sure he could entertain us for the next hour and a half in greciating detail, but my point is, I think, well-taken and well-understood. Your Honor, thank you for a great meeting.
I would agree. I don't have a lot to add. I think we've accomplished quite a bit tonight in setting the stage for future discussions. Appreciate all the context that's coming, context that's come into play talking tonight. The one thing I did want to ask our city manager to address was Ms. Fox's comment about the Intergovernmental Housing Coalition, if maybe we can get a quick update on that. Other than that, we do have a meeting next Tuesday here at City Hall. It's our special meeting to talk about the operation millage increase decision, 5:15.
It's our special meeting to talk about the operation millage increase decision, 5:15. So, next Tuesday, we'll be back here again. All right, thanks, everyone. On to our city manager.
Thank you. Yeah, so, I do want to address the comments and a few questions about the intergovernmental housing task force. And that actually is something that, on behalf of Market County, the Lake Superior Community Partnership has kind of started this, this group of intergovernmental coalition or task force and are really focusing on the housing at a regional level. At this point, the task force, who Sean Hobbins, Assistant City Manager, Sean Hobbins acts as our liaison for, hasn't met in a few months, and there have been no other developers or any developers really have been included in this conversation. It really has been limited at this point to just those governmental bodies to kind of start the discussion and really try to assess that, the needs, and really try to come up with a better picture on a regional level for those needs. So, they have been pursuing the market analysis, so really what, we all know what we're looking for as a county body to enable them to really pursue any regional solutions. So, at this point, I do believe they're planning to meet at the end of June to really kind of pick up those conversations. Again, as we are all aware, there was some change in leadership within the LSCP organization, which may have kind of halted just a few things, but also, everybody's been really, really busy, not just, not just the city of Marquette, but they do plan to have those conversations again here soon. So, and we haven't had anything really to update the commission on because really, this is truly just an introduction and conversation starter between all of these partners. So, I do believe that is something that we can certainly have Sean mention at the next meeting as some interest from Habitat and really when it's appropriate to bring in other organizations and developers into that conversation. I hope that clarifies a few things, and we're really excited to see what comes out of those conversations, so.
Great. Appreciate that update.
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. We are adjourned at 7:25 PM. Thanks, everyone.